Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, October 23rd, 2019. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm the Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, John Blasco. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Reverend Burgess is the Chair. We have deferred papers. Bill Number 2081. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with CSS Inc. for the provision of a business tax and revenue management software package for some not to exceed $5 million over five years and for the payment of the costs thereof. Bill Number 2180. Resolution authorizing the conveyance of a portion of Enright Parklet to Penley Park South Inc. and accepting certain property in the 8th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh for public purposes to become part of Enright Parklet. This public hearing is scheduled for October 28th. Public Works Committee, Mrs. Kell Smith is the Chair. We have deferred papers. Bill Number 1637. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Departments of Parks and the Department of Public Works to enter into a lease agreement with the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater for a portion of real property located on Liberty Avenue between 29th and 30th Streets. Bill Number 2181. Resolution authorizing the acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the grant of an easement in the 8th Ward, 9th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh by Penley Park South Inc. pursuant to the provisions of PPS Revised Amended Preliminary Land Development Plan approved by the Planning Commission on February 12th, 2019 as further amended by order of the Court of Common Pleas. A public hearing is scheduled on this matter for October 28th. We have new papers. Bill Number 2174. Resolution amending and supplementing Resolution Number 565 of 2019 entitled "Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multimodal Transportation Fund Program should the grant be awarded by DCED to provide funding for the South 21st Street Complete Green Street Project." The grant proposal includes an ask of $1,578,725 with a local match of $473,618 to be contributed by the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. Bill Number 2175. Resolution taking, appropriating, and condemning by the City of Pittsburgh for roadway purposes certain property in the 26th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh owned by Sessi Portuguese and known as 45 Semisir Street, authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition and relocation costs related thereto. Land Use, excuse me, and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 2172. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections DC Fast Charging and Hydrogen Fueling Grant Program to install electric vehicles charging stations in a parking lot at 6117 Kirkwood Street and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $245,650 for this stated purpose. Innovation Performance and Asset Management Committee, Mrs. Strasburger is the Chair. We have a deferred paper. We have Bill Number 2156. Resolution authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Department of Public Works, and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an amended agreement with Cartograph Systems Inc. in order to continue licensing application software and for the purchase of associated subscription, maintenance, cloud hosting, and professional services. We have new papers. Bill Number 2176. Resolution amending Resolution 639 of 2013 which authorized the City to enter into a contract or agreement with Pittsburgh Community Television for public access television services by extending the term of the agreement for one year to September 18th, 2020. Bill Number 2177. Resolution amending Resolution 662 of 2018 authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Karasov Technology Corporation for Hootsuite Enterprise Social Relationship Platform to better manage the City's online constituent services effort with annual cost of the agreement not to Bill Number 2178. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a master lease agreement with Dell Financial Services for leasing services to lease electronic devices with installation and support services for a period of seven years. The total amount of funds for this equipment and services will be appropriated and approved under certain subsequent requests and will not exceed a total of $3,358,711.23. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. We have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 2029. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the 201 Arsenal Phase 2 Residential Land Development Project located at 135 39th Street. And we have a new paper. Bill Number 2173. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Allegheny County with respect to the winter seasons of 2019, 2020, 2020 through 2021, and 2021 through 2022, November 1st to March 31st of each year, under which the City will store, handle, and load salt for the county, and the county will store, handle, and load salt for the city. And the City will perform snow and ice clearance together with the application of anti-skid and/or de-icing materials for certain county roads, including bridges with their approaches, and the county will perform snow and ice clearance together with the application of anti-skid and/or de-icing materials for certain city roads, including bridges with their approaches. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting of October 23rd, 2019. Our First Order of Business is public comment. Members of the public who want to address City Council, please come forward. You'll be given three minutes. The green light means to be started three minutes. The yellow light means one minute to summarize. Red light means time to relinquish the podium. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that the rules of council state explicitly, the comment is limited to matters of concern or deliberation which are or may be for council. You're supposed to talk to us, not to the viewing audience at home. And profanity will not be permitted and order will be maintained at all times.
Was she Dr. Ronaldan Miller? South Side, District 3, Wards 4, Hartley, 16, 17, 18, and 30. Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2020, globalintelligencesociety.org. Author, Gen Sex Identity Formation 2010 and coming up in 2019, a revision. A concern of this council is the Gen Sex Identity Formation of our children and therefore the influences on that formation. So, consider the influence of Viola Davis. Oscar winning, Oscar nominee in 2018 for Veronica in Widows. Emmy winner for her character Annalise in the TV show How to Get Away with Murder, HTGAWM. And a key underlay, honey amber subtext in this is that we, US Americans and so Pittsburghers are spawning in vivo and in vitro children who are prosaically and poetically able to internalize sex information and externalize that sex intelligence, as sex intelligence on doing it before they're 10. Watch VD in HGDAWM dictate one or zero sex imperatives to her student children. "Go sell yourselves," she says. The kernel layered text, a searing, seeping l'orange, is that we are sexting our children up and down via antiphonal, inter-individual schizophrenic messages signaling a yes and a no on the issue of just do it. Watch VD's law professor sexting just about anybody and being rewarded as a character and also as the actress, many dollars, and awarded many TV honors. Sex is what works for her. The karmic azure supra-textual overlay is that we are pheromonally centralizing our children in the formation of their individual identities from images like those that are in this show. VD-dominated HTGAWM, white, black, gold, bronze, women having sex with any man in their vicinity and men too, with men and women and boys and girls, all in vivid visuals and pulsating sound strips. I object to this. I find this reprehensible, again, as my word of the last two weeks, and I think that you as a council should denounce it.
My name is Les Ludwig. I'm from Squirrel Hill. Yesterday, I spoke to the issue of our Democratic Party not having a leg to stand on because of the fact that each of the 20 candidates, none of them have really come up with a plan by which to pay for all the programs. So therefore, there's almost an open lie and the public will sense it and therefore there is a very certain risk that Mr. Trump might win the position for a second term. So today, what am I supposed to do at 80, almost 87 years of age? Well, I've got eight grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, and I don't want to leave a country, literally, with a man who lies 10,000 times and gets caught in them. So I'm here to present myself to the party and say, "I know and I have shown you where the money is, and I also have additional ways of raising trillions of dollars with very little trouble. Wake up, America. Wake up Pittsburgh Democratic Party and pick up a candidate, a candidacy that can win because of the fact that no one else has got the bread." So, I end up having to call a party something, and if you want to have a third party, I'll tell you a brief story of being at the Walmart in West Mifflin and having an African-American couple walk up to me who I never had seen before, and they said, "We know you." And I said, "What do you mean you know me?" I was shocked. They said, "Well, we watch for you every Tuesday and Wednesday on television." I said, "Well, do I say anything that's worthwhile?" And their reply was shocking. They said, "You're the only one down there with any common sense." Well, I don't want to take that much credit, but I've tried, and I do have some legislation to my record to help the City. Let's get together, let's work together to a successful completion of the election. I thank you.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. Citizens, I know, the ones I know and quite a few watch it are laughing at Mr. Burgess with that statement that we have to address. Ms. Smith, you remember years ago when I brought up, when he was getting ready to work with Second Chance? He's getting ready to work with that Sandusky. The community didn't know. They were coming, they were supposed to put buildings, put houses in the community. And the woman came and said, "You know what Mr. Burgess is getting ready to do?" And I said it here. I said, "Does the community know you're getting ready to work with this man and the trial's not over? Let's wait and see what happens with Sandusky." He took the book out and he read it, that I can't ask any question except at the table. That's what he's trying to say. Listen, I want you to understand this. When I keep on telling you that I worked with Kathleen Mulgane, who became the head judge, please understand, to work under her, she had to be dynamite to make it to the top. She was a stickler for details. Do you understand details? This council right here, you're very sloppy with our money and our business. Do you understand? And you got an attitude. Now, he said, "We must talk to you." Why? When you two, Ms. Smith and Mr. Kraus sat and talked, his egg came and talked to Mr. Lavelle. You got, sometimes you're on your cell phones, sometimes you're texting, but we must face the front. We can't talk to the audience because there's the ones that's listening. Mr. Burgess, Mr. Burgess, do you remember when they said about you that you were having sex with one of them students and you gave her an A? Now, these are women from Homewood that know you, and I said, "No way." I said, "No way." But when I came in here to speak one day and he had changed the time that we had to sign up, anytime we signed up by 12, we had to sign up by 10:30. And the only reason why I spoke because I told Mary Beth, "I will sue you." And Les got to speak because he went to Tim and Tim said you could speak because he was going to make sure it be 10, just like when she made that quote in Homewood, Ms. Harris, that only 10 could speak. He was going to do the same thing to cover up for her, but you know what? I'm going to keep, still keep speaking about, "Oh, Mr. Lavelle, thank you very much." They moved this two signs. They moved them, and what had happened, it seems that the base of what they were holding it with had flown off. But thank you very much because someone got hurt. And you, and still Mr. Burgess, they're laughing at you because they thought it was Kraus that's chasing my little black babies out of here, and they found out. They said, "A black man is saying they can't speak?" See, I studied black history. You know what our babies had to do? Five and six years old, for the slave masters, they had to empty their poop and their pee every morning. Every morning, the black babies had to do it. And here you say they can't speak? You ought to be ashamed of yourself.
So, I will respond to public comment. I will say this, and I think I'll say it publicly first, and then I think we should discuss it in the upcoming months. We have no, absolutely no obligation to televise public hearings, public comment, and I think we should move to make public comment, not televise, because it's just, it's getting to a point where it is personal, it is not constructive, and it is not even helpful to our, not even helpful to our viewing public. And so, between now and January, hopefully, I will work with the President and other members of council to talk about how we can, because I think the public has absolutely a right to talk to us and say whatever they want, but they do not have the right to use this as PCTV, because PCTV is the place where they can have their own opportunity to say whatever they want. This is not that. I'm sorry, I thought that was it. Next speaker, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jennifer Haven, here on behalf of the Friendship Community Group, the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, and the Enright Neighborhood Association. We are the intervenors in the Enright Park, Penn Plaza lawsuits with the City. There were originally seven of them. They were all settled per a consent order dated October 27th, 2017. For almost the two years since then and with seven layers to the letters to the administration, we've asked for a transparent process and a full implementation of that October 27th, 2017 consent order, to which the City was a party. We believe that we have lived up to our end of the consent order. The developer, LG Realty, has lived up to their end of the consent order, and we believe that the City has failed in three respects to follow through on its promises in the consent order. This includes public access to the park. We have been asking LG Realty, Dan Gilman, the Mayor, and the City Solicitor for a copy or a draft of this easement since July. We have not received a copy or a draft of this easement. We believe that before you vote today on a final land swap, that this easement should be made public and the public should be able to review and comment on it. We were told at one point, very recently, that we would have to file a right-to-know request after council passes their vote today, and I don't believe that that is in the public's best interest. Additionally, we believe that the up to $1 million for the park, to provide a park that has the same or greater amenities, is not going to provide a park with the same or greater amenities that currently exists, and the consent order states that the park should be fully funded and open upon the opening of Phase 1 of LG's project. I looked at the Mayor's preliminary budget. I don't see any additional money for the park for 2020. The developer has stated that the park, I'm sorry, that the Whole Foods project would be open in 2021. I would hope to see that the Mayor and City Council fully funds this park to be opened at the same time as the development. Finally, the City had promised in Paragraph 4 of the consent order to expand the TRID to 3/4 of a mile so that affordable housing would be able to be built in East Liberty, Friendship, and Garfield. To date, over two years, that expansion has not occurred. That expansion flows from you. You have the authority to expand that TRID. City Planning has stated to us in writing that the URA Solicitor has advised them that that expansion can now not be effectuated. We have requested this expansion monthly since being told in July of this year that that expansion cannot occur. I really appreciate you taking the time. I have some letters that I'd like to give to you that we've been sending to the administration. Can I please give these to Madam Clark?
Yes, you can.
Thank you so much.
Sure. All right. Any other, next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing those speakers, we ask the clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Clark-Hill.
Here.
Mrs. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
President Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Reverend Burgess, nine members present.
Here. We have, the First Order of Business is Finance and Law Committee. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 2081. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with CSS Inc. for the provision of a business tax and revenue management software package for some not to exceed $5 million over five years and for the payment of the costs thereof.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve with discussion, please.
Is there a second? Give a second. Is there need for conversation? It's in your hands. If no need for conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposer's name. Next bill, please.
Bill 2180. Resolution authorizing the conveyance of a portion of Enright Parklet to Penley Park South Inc. and accepting certain property in the 8th Ward of the City for public purposes to become part of Enright Parklet.
I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Second, would you defer for me for a minute?
Yes.
Sean, would you come forward? I've been working with the developers, the court, the law department, all on this issue. And so, we, there is a public hearing scheduled for next Monday at 20, the 28th, in the evening prior to final approval. We are, we are simply complying to the court order, so this is not in our wheelhouse to change. This has already been decided by the court. If the community groups have issues, it is with the City. Sean?
I think the question, the bill she came to speak to was the next one, 2181.
Okay, not this one.
No, this is the required land swap that was approved by the Orphans Court on October the 4th. I'm sorry, Sean Carter, Office of Councilman Ricky Burgess.
Okay.
Yes, this Bill Number 2180 is the land swaps. We're exchanging parcels with the Penley Park South. The question that I believe came up in public comment refers to the easements in Bill Number 2181, which I believe is next on the agenda.
And the Public Works. All right, and that's, that's connected.
Well, that's right. That isn't another committee.
It's another committee, but it's connected.
Yes.
All right, and so, but for this one, both, both of them, we may as well read them together because they're connected. If you read Bill 2181.
Bill 2181. Resolution authorizing the acceptance by the City of the grant of an easement in the 8th Ward, 9th Council District by Penley Park South Inc. pursuant to the provisions of PPS Revised Amended Preliminary Land Development Plan approved by the Planning Commission, February 12th, 2019 as further amended by order of a Court of Common Pleas.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve.
Second. With discussion.
There's discussion. If you refer back to me. Now, Sean, let's go, let's walk both of them through.
Yes, sir. There's a motion to amend.
I have an amendment. It is, um, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. It's a person, yeah. Need a second.
Second.
Motion, this amendment, this is a motion amended by substitution, right?
Regular amendment.
No, just a regular amendment. All right. All those in favor of the amendments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or discussion on the amendment.
Yes.
Mrs. Harris.
Yes.
Sean, walk through the amendment.
Yes, this amendment merely adds a new Section 4, which provides for the actual language of the easement and a visual description of the easement to be attached to this bill prior to its passage.
Need the conversation. Ms. Gross.
Thank you. So, again.
On the amendment.
That's the section that I'm asking about.
Yeah, yeah, on the amendment. Yes, that's fine.
So, it says, "Legal description of the parcels over which the easement will be placed and is further demarcated in the plan is attached as Exhibit A." Do we have Exhibit A with us right now?
No, we do not have Exhibit A yet, but we will have Exhibit A prior to the public hearing.
All right, and that is what our public testifier was asking for, or no? So that the easement copy that the public wants to be able to read.
Right.
Is that the same thing that council doesn't have to read? Or will have to read but does not?
That is the same thing that council does not have to read yet, but will have to read prior to the public hearing.
Is there, we say we don't have it?
And Council for the intervenors, Council for the developer, and Council for the City have, my understanding is a meeting scheduled to hammer that part out.
Okay, so it's unsettled.
I don't know that it's unsettled.
Not created.
But it has not been submitted to, it has not been submitted yet for attachment to the bill, and it will be prior to the public hearing.
So, Monday, the 28th?
At 1:30.
You'll have it in written form for us before the, so...
Hopefully, prior to that.
So...
I anticipate that council will have it prior to the public...
Again, just so that everyone understands. Again, just so that everyone understands, is there a, is it subject to the waiting period between, like, when we have to have a piece of legislation for the public to read it and then have a public hearing on it?
No.
So we can, like, have it right there at that time?
We'll have it before then. We'll have a chance. But my, my, we are, okay, we are helping, really, the council part, but this is actually not our office doing this. This is, this is the agreement that's being struck.
The administration, right?
Between, between the administration and the developer. I'm simply helping them walk it through legisla- legislatively with the courts.
So let me also say that the original legislation does not have a section that says this easement's attached as Exhibit A, and your amendment.
To put it in.
Adds it to our legislative record, which I deeply appreciate.
Right.
Um, and then we'll have it before final vote, we'll have it before the public hearing, and then we'll have a final vote.
Yes.
So that's, I think, important. Um, and I guess there's nothing we can do to implore the administration to release it?
We can employ them to release, we can employ them to release it.
To your administration, we implore you to release it.
Yes, I will, I will, I will. Again, um, we will, since we have helped them through the legislation, we will try to get it to you as soon as possible.
Right.
We'll make it a priority.
Right.
Okay?
Um, I'll just say further that the, there were three points, and the, the money can be handled separately, but doesn't belong in this legislation. And expanding the trade is a, an interesting topic that I've been interested in for some time, so if, again, we don't need to do it here while we're discussing the amendment, but if you can provide us with a briefing of that, I think it'd be, be helpful.
Sure.
So much.
So, um, first of all, on the amendment, we have amendment adding section four, uh, to the bill that gives us, um, this, uh, legal description. Um, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposees nay. One abstention?
Abstain.
Two abstentions. Okay, so then we have.
I had my hand up.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry she had her hand up.
I just want to be very, very clear that these two amendments, plus what we have here, plus A, and anything else dealing with this, we will have enough time to read before the public hearing.
That would be correct.
Yeah.
Not just us, but the public knows.
And also, the public, particularly those around that area in the community.
And, and again, I, I don't want to relitigate this case. Um, I find some of their arguments not to be persuasive, um, because some of it is just based on paranoia. Um, the idea that that park would not be public, and that this, the public would not have a guaranteed right to the park is nonsensical, um, in many ways. It's just, it's just, and, and so, I just, I really think, in many ways, and I still think this from the beginning, that this, some of this discussion has just been a smokescreen for them not wanting the development to occur, and trying to do everything in their power to make this as difficult as possible for the development to occur, because they didn't like it and they don't want it. And so I think the park, and some of the issues of the park are actually not sincere, but they're really, um, 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 using a technical process, um, and when they could not win in court, have not won in court. And so what we're doing now is simply following what the court has dictated for us to do, right? They have, they have, and so, I am of belief that the park, I love parks. I grew up in parks. I worked for Park and Recreations all summers in college. I am a fan of parks, 1,000 percent. Um, but I'm also a fan of, 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 um, of following law and, 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 and trying to get projects finished once we decide that they're going to move forward. This project's going to move forward, let's get it finished. And this is simply, in this case, I'm just helping the law department, development, to fi- to finish the technical part that allows a park to be created. Isn't that right, Sean? All right, so, we're back to the, so.
I still had the floor.
You show the floor, Ms. Harris, beside the parking lot.
But I think, no matter where the public is, they have a right to see everything before the public hearing.
I agree with that.
So, uh.
Full transparency.
My question is, will they be able to see this as?
Yep.
One, including any attachments?
Yep.
That are to go through this, uh, by the, by the hearing? And the hearing is?
Monday.
Monday at what time?
1:30.
1:30. Sean?
Um, I can assure you that the, the interveners, one of whom is in the, in our presence today, will have that information prior to the public hearing.
Right. I mean, whether, no matter how we feel, they still.
Because our law department is dealing with their, our law department is dealing with their lawyers. Because once you threaten to sue the city, that's what happens. The lawyers have to talk to the lawyers. And that's where we're at.
I'm not creating it, they're creating. Or else you would already have it. Yes, Ms. Smith.
So I'm going to say that I typically try to honor and respect what, you know, each council member wants in their district, but lately those lines have been blurred when we all are getting involved in each other's districts all the time. So I feel like I'm going to say what I feel like I have to say, and I, I want to make sure, first of all, that I think Reverend Burgess does a great job in making sure that his district and his constituents are protected and, and that they're doing what they can. So I will say that. But I will say that I think, just in general, having these conversations about parks and public space and public-private partnerships are really important and critical right now, especially as we're talking about voting on, uh, the referendum, the ballot question on whether or not we should have a tax specifically for parks. And when I look at the, um, at some articles about the inequality in America's public parks, and they cite the Minneapolis parks, um, where Jane Miller was the director at the time, and is now here, leading the charge here and for Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, um, on this proposed tax, and they talk about the racial and economic inequalities as well as, are well documented, America's housing, education, and criminal justice, but little attention's been paid to the disparities in access to the, to the country's public parks. I think this is a crucial time for us to really have this conversation, and I think this coming up is such, so timely of what's occurring right now. So I want to make sure the public has every bit of information that they can have, um, and, and to make sure that we're having these conversations, um, overall, and that it's not just about one specific park, but a broader conversation, so.
Well, I can assure you, councilwoman, this park, the Enright Park, is not being redeveloped as a public-private partnership, it's actually a public-public-public partnership between the city and two of its authorities.
So, and I think we need to see those agreements, and, and I think that's, Councilwoman Gross and I have been talking about the need for us to see agreements prior to them being agreed upon and, and being, um, adopted into the cities and to.
Well, in this case, the court agreed to it for us.
So, I know that part, I realize that part. But I'm just saying, we need to have this conversation.
We'll get you as much as.
We want to make sure people have information. I want to make sure that people have information. I want to know what I'm reading and what I'm, what I'm voting on, so.
Any other conversation?
I don't care what court decides.
Any other conversation? Interesting, it's interesting, but I think, I think I'm the only council district that has three new parks being built. I think. I have three new parks being built.
Which would pretty much actually argue against the, the need for the park tax that people are talking about.
I'm just saying, I have three.
Because they're saying, in, in poorer areas is where we see the disparities.
I have, I have.
You just said, you have some of the best parks.
I have three, I have three, I have three new parks being built in my district. I have one, um, being built as part of Lomer Choice, which is a million-dollar park on the corner of, it's on, um, it is on Lomer Avenue, uh, part of it borders the corner of Lomer and East Liberty Boulevard. It will be a state-of-the-art park with tanks underneath to capture the water, is part of Lomer Choice. It will be a spectacular, one of the most green, innovative parks in the history of our city. Um, I'm in the midst of redoing Stargill Field, which is in Homewood, um, and, um, that will be new, new parking lot, new field, uh, new amenities, and then this Enright Park. So I actually have three new parks right now, um, being, um, constructed and planned in my district. And we're planning for Fort Pitt Field, so, then, which would be the fourth one, if we get the funding for it. So it's a good time. All right, so, um.
Well, congratulations on all of those things.
So, we have this bill on the table, any more conversation? If no conversation?
This is the amendment.
No, we already passed the amendment.
Good, okay.
We passed the amendment. This is back to original two bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposees nay. One abstention, two abstentions. All right?
She didn't abstain.
You didn't abstain?
I thought this would be held for a public hearing.
No, we're having a public hearing, the public hearing's already scheduled.
This is preliminary, but.
It's a preliminary vote. We're going to have the public hearing on Monday and vote it finally on Tuesday. That's the plan.
Uh, abstain.
All right, two abstentions. Any other conversation? No other conversation, thank you very much, Sean, for your work in this. All those in favor, we already did this. Uh, next bill, we see invoices next. Invoices on the table, all those in favor, no, need a motion?
Go first.
Need a second. Uh, question, Ms. Harris, I see your hand this time.
Bill?
I just had a question on a couple of these, um.
On the invoice portion?
Yeah.
Your organic council budget.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
I'm coming.
I'm here with the rest of the papers protesting.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to have a drink during.
What I don't know, I'll get for you, but go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, here it is, right up front. Okay, it was, sorry, it's not on the invoices. I'm sorry, my question, but stay here. My question isn't on the invoices, it's on another one, so.
All those in favor, invoices signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposees nay. Invoices are approved. That takes me with my fingers moving to the interdepartmental transfers, there's interdepartmental transfers, I need a motion for the transfers.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Question about transfers, Ms. Harris.
Yeah, what do they need from the administrative fees? And why, number one, why do they have extra money in there? And, uh, they're sending 25,000 over for machinery and equipment. Anybody have an answer to the question?
It looks like it's new fuel site surveillance cameras.
I had two questions. Okay, they, they have in their budget, you know, administrative fees, money, okay, and they want to give away 25,000 and put it into machinery and equipment. My first question is, why did they have so much extra for administrative fees? And number two, to transfer this, what's the machinery and the equipment?
Well, I, I can, uh, give sort of a basis on this. Uh, the administrative fees, uh, there was, there's obviously some funding left over, monies they hadn't spent, this is all within their budget, so they try to budget within the year.
So, so they'll probably need 25,000 less next year?
That could be.
Okay.
Um, it all depends on how the budget works out for that year. Budgets are always living. There, we do transfer money from time to time, uh, from department to department as well. Uh, this is money they budget within a department, specifically the, uh, money's going into, uh, cover new fuel site surveillance camera installations. Uh, we've had upgrades, and we have a new fueling card system coming in, and, uh, we need to make sure that those cameras are all operable, so we don't have theft or damage to.
Administrative fees are for cameras, or are you telling me?
No, no, that's why there's a transfer.
Okay, the transfer is for?
Is for the, uh, surveillance cameras at our fueling sites. We have a new fueling card system that's going to come online, hopefully.
Why is budgeting paying for it? Why isn't coming from Public Safety?
Um, actually, the cameras are being, going to be purchased through Public Safety, um, through the contract to Public Safety and, uh, with their consultation, but the, uh, Fleet Services falls under OMB.
Okay.
So that's the.
So you're saying Public Safety is involved, and they need cameras at the fueling stations?
Yes.
Wow, okay. There's nobody that hands them?
Um, this would be after hours and such. They have a key system now where they use a fuel fob. That now is changing, I can't tell you exactly how they're, uh, going to be approaching it, but they're changing it, so they want to make sure that it's, uh.
Let me know when you find out.
The surveillance works. One of the cameras were down at one of the stations, I don't, I didn't want to say that, but, you know, you need to keep these things, um, operable.
Yeah, but that's a lot of extra money in administrative fees, okay. I'm right, I'm, I'm okay on that one.
Any other conversation? If no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposees nay. Peacards are on the table.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
All right, Ms. Harris, conversation.
It says, uh, for the Planning Department, Brewer's catering, and it's for food-for-consultant, is it? What does that mean?
Um, I'll get you the specifics. Apparently, they must had a consultant come in, and they, uh, provided, uh, food for ever kind of meeting they have. Uh, this happens from time to time, uh, in departments, they'll have different events, uh, employee functions, uh, or training, and they'll provide food.
Okay, if, they should wrote it up better than what they did.
Yeah, I can get you, I'll get you the specifics, uh, from the, uh, from the system amendment.
Okay, then, to the police, we have UPMC Heart Saving Cards, UPMC Education, $1,700. Why wouldn't that come from our paramedics and the doctor we have working for us?
I have to ask the question of, of the, uh, of the chief on that one.
I would really like to know, because, um, uh, any kind of training that I've ever seen that was necessary came from EMS. So can you give me that answer too, Bill?
Sure, absolutely, I'm taking a note right now.
Okay. And then, I think that was the last question. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm going to have to abstain because I'm waiting for information.
All right, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposees nay, abstentions, one abstention. Thank you very much. That takes us to Public Works Committee. Ms. Kail Smith is the chair, we have a supplemental paper.
Bill 2208, resolution providing for an agreement between the city and Columbia Gas of Pennsylvania in connection with the paving of Cunston Avenue between Bonner and Dry Cove Street, Fort Ice between Calley Street and Caperton's Avenue, Caperton Street, between Cunston Avenue to Roaston Street, Roaston Street between Caperton Street to Bonner Avenue, and Bonner Avenue between Roaston Street to 208 Bonner Avenue. The estimated cost of preparation and completion of work is $163,891.82.
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Conversation. No con... Mr. Coghill.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, uh, Dan Gilman for pushing this along. They've been up in that neighborhood, Bonner section for, it seems like, three years, Columbia Gas. We've had issues up there, but, um, you know, and then it was a question as to who's gonna pay it. So I'm assuming he took care of it and, uh, came to an agreement with Columbia Gas and all was good and all was right, so...
And Domy, we'll thank Domy as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, and, and of course, the crane eras, yeah.
Just saying.
Domy, Domy.
Any other conversations? He no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Abstentions. Next bill, please.
Bill twenty-two oh nine. Resolution authorizing an agreement between the city and Columbia Gas of Pennsylvania in connection with the restoration and paving of Sidney Street between Twenty-first to Seventeenth. Seventeenth between Bingham Street and Memorial Street. Twenty-first between Carson and Sidney and Wright's Way between Twenty-first Street to twenty-one oh seven Wright's Way. Providing for the payment of the costs thereof by Columbia Gas to the city. The estimated cost of preparation and completion of work is one hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and eight cents.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any conversation?
Yeah, it's all good, yeah.
No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill sixteen thirty-seven. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and Public Works to enter into a lease agreement with the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater for a portion of real property located on Liberty Avenue between Twenty-ninth and Thirtieth Street.
Need a motion?
Motion to... Motion to approve.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation?
I'll defer to Councilwoman Gross.
There's an amendment on the table.
Thank you. Um, actually, I have to, uh... I have your yellow copy in front of you for twenty nineteen sixteen thirty-seven. Um, and I had spoken with the chair, Councilwoman Smith, yesterday and asked her if she wanted to co-sponsor. Would you like to add your name, Councilwoman?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Madam Clark, could you do that?
So noted.
I also, um, have an attachment, which is, will be part of the motion as well. To attach this letter as Exhibit A.
And I have then, I think you did two things, well, one thing, you do it together. I need a motion to amend and attach.
Motion to amend and attach?
Need a second?
Second.
Conversation on the amendment and attachment.
Thank you. This is a bill that we've been holding for some time, and I've been updating council that we had multiple community meetings. And if the chair will allow, I'm gonna elaborate slightly here, since we've had a lot of conversation about parks. This park is publicly held, and I just want to acknowledge so that everybody understands. It was bequeathed to the city by the heirs of our first mayor, Ebenezer Denny. That is why it is called Denny Park. Um, I do see Sarah in the audience here. I won't call you to the table, but I'm sure you can give us some history here. Um, it is, um, the tiny little stretch from Twenty-ninth to Thirtieth on Liberty Avenue that you probably drive by at thirty-five miles an hour and haven't noticed. It just has one little playground structure on it. It's across the street from the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater. In nineteen ninety-five, council leased that park to the Ballet Theater and renewed that lease in twenty-ten. Um, the lease has been, is still a few years out from ending, but a longer lease is being requested. Um, and that is why I made sure that the ballet went and talked to the neighborhood organization. They've had extensive conversations. They actually have in the attachment that I'm putting on as Exhibit A, a signed understanding, co-signed by both the chair of the neighborhood organization and the executive director of the ballet. And so I'm attaching it to this resolution to send over to the administration in a non-binding way. But I think it's important that it's in the record. So it's in, if it's in the council record, it's in the public record. Similarly, my amendment on the yellow paper adds a section that says that I want the, the proposed lease to come back to city council for our approval. Again, if we have it, then the public has it. I'd like to remind council that some weeks ago, we had a post agenda on the parks referendum. And we had Chief Gilman at the table, we had the Director of Public Works at the table, we had the City Controller at the table, and we had the Executive Director of the Parks Conservancy at the table. When the subject of Shenley Plaza came up, I said, who has that lease or co-op agreement? And everyone at the table said, well, of course, council has it, because it would have been attached to your council resolutions. I had the clerk's office look into it. Here's the nineteen ninety-eight resolution for Shenley Plaza that pre-authorizes the mayor to do a, uh, co-op agreement with the Parks Conservancy. And here's this similar resolution re-upped in twenty-eleven that authorized, uh, then Mayor Ravenstall to enter into a co-op agreement with the Parks Conservancy about Shenley Plaza. Council does not have that co-op agreement. Our clerk does not have the co-op agreement. And so if it is not in our legislative record, then the public does not have that co-op agreement. Um, and so this may be, I think, the beginning of a conversation. But for this tiny parcel, um, with historic value, um, that's an under-improved park that even has, you know, full community support for the project. I still think it's an important model to have whatever is the lease or co-op agreement for publicly owned real estate, tangible public assets, um, in the public record for public discussion. So that's, uh, all I have to say about what the, is the amendment.
All right, so we have amendment, a motion to amend and attach on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Takes us back to original building, more conversation?
I just wanna thank everyone for their patience.
If not, Mr. Coghill.
I just got a curiosity. I'm just, what does a ballet theater do in the park? They dance outside in the park?
They may in the future. Right now, they are not. It is, um, just one city block, just from Liberty Avenue to the adjoining alley and from Twenty-ninth to Thirtieth. Half of it is to suit for parking.
Got it, yeah, so there's no structure there.
No, and it is publicly available parking. I mean, it's not gated parking, but it's, um, so you can drive to use the unimproved side of the park. The agreement and discussion is about what to do in the new lease, which is committing them to do improvements, so that there actually is a reason to go to that park. Because right now, there's really not much to do there.
Well, thanks for your homework on that. And, you know, that's one of the reasons why I feel the park tax is not a good idea, because it's kind of not in our control. And that's what you're saying about this park as well, as far as the lease goes, right? So, uh, I guess we'll talk more about that later.
Right.
Oh, the advertising they're doing. Wow.
I was simply saying that I was pleasantly surprised when I found out that the Executive Director of the ballet is in my district. And I did not know that until this summer. I had a chance to meet him and his wife, and they are, they are residing in the ninth council district. And so we have great things going on there. There's a motion to approve, yes.
I'm sorry, can I actually just say something and clarify?
Sure.
Um, it's, it's relevant to what Councilwoman Gross said. And so I'm interested in digging in on this as well, because I was under the impression, because we're going through a similar lease agreement discussion in my district. And I was under the impression that as soon it was, as it was executed, it was a public, public document. That's what I've been told. Now, that might be different from being publicly in the record. So I'm interested in sort of digging in and figuring out what is the best, um, you know, what is the purview of council? What is the best, um, use of our time and our energy? And also, you know, what is sort of best practice? Is to make it transparent, but without unnecessarily burdening us with, you know, additional...
Right, which is why I added the thing about like tangible real estate or real assets, because, you know, we don't need to interfere in every contracting, as Councilwoman Burge just so often reminds us. It's not our role.
I'm interested in this ongoing discussion, just to play, you know.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion to approve on the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. All right. Let me get back to that page. Next bill, please.
Bill twenty-one seventy-four. Resolution amending and supplementing Resolution Number five sixty-five, which authorized the mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development multi-modular transportation fund program. Should the grant be awarded by D C E D to provide funding for the South Twenty-first Complete Green Street Project to increase the budget authority to match an increased ask in the grant application to now be two million five hundred thousand dollars, with an unchanged local match of four hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars to be contributed by the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. In the event the grant is awarded, this amended resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two million nine hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars.
Need a motion?
Reluctantly, a motion to approve.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any other conversation?
Yes, there is conversation.
Ms. Smith.
So, I just, I wanna make it clear that I really was not supportive and I was not going to give P W S A another green infrastructure project until they took care of the project in Banksville. And also in, the projects in Councilwoman Coghill's district. We have experiencing a lot of flooding issues around the green infrastructure projects. One in Banksville was actually, it's my understanding, was designed by the Executive Director of the P W S A. And Councilwoman Kraus gave me some reassurance that he believes this may be, uh, designed by, uh, Carnegie Mellon University. So I don't know if that's accurate or not, but that gives me a little bit of hope that the project might, will be successful. I wish they were involved in the one, in the solution for, um, Banksville as well. But I do wanna say that Council, or that Chief of Staff Gilman has been working on some solutions along with the Director of Domy and others that give me a little bit more hope for what's going to happen in Banksville. But, um, I'm really not really crazy about the idea of P W S A being involved in green infrastructure projects, given the history that we're experiencing in my district, and, and it's not been good. It's, it's been, as everybody knows, that they've had, experienced a lot of flooding, um, in that area. And it was to mitigate the water and flooding that they were having and were experiencing initially. And it's actually, um, has, it's, in some cases, seems like it's increased in some of the areas. So I just wanna make sure that people know that when you're talking about green infrastructure, you have to make sure that you have some really good plans in place for maintenance and, um, in addressing any issues that might arise. And, and I don't think that P W S A had that. And I do want also to thank, uh, Councilwoman Gross, because she's been involved too, um, lately in, uh, the Banksville project. And, uh, I, I wish you had been on the board when this all came about in the first place, to be honest with you. But anyway, so I'm going to say, okay, I made the motion to approve at the request of Councilwoman Kraus reluctantly.
Any other conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. All right, that takes us to the next bill, please.
Bill twenty-one seventy-five. Resolution taking appropriating and condemning by the city for roadway purposes certain property in the Twenty-sixth Ward owned by Cessy Portuguese and known as Forty-Five, uh, Semisir Street, authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary incidental acquisition and relocation costs related thereof thereto.
My...
Councilwoman Harris. Need a motion?
Just wondering about that. Motion to hold for executive session. There's an executive session scheduled, and Councilwoman Harris would like to hold until the executive session takes place.
No, well, right?
It's scheduled for, it's scheduled for tomorrow.
Well, we're asking for it to be rescheduled, because I can't be there at that time.
So a motion to hold, how, for, for how long? Executive session?
Motion to hold for two weeks.
Okay, that'd be good.
Motion to hold for two weeks, there's a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. It's held for two weeks. Land use, and we move now to Land Use Economic Development Committee. Ms. Gross is the chair. We have deferred paper.
Bill nineteen fifty-three. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as Heeside Cottage, located at four sixteen Katoma Street in the Vine View neighborhood in the Twenty-fifth Ward.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill twenty-one seventy-two. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections DC Fast Charging and Hydrogen Fueling Grant Program to install electric vehicles charging stations in a parking lot at sixty-one seventeen Kirkwood Street and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two hundred forty-five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. This grant requires a match from the Pittsburgh Parking Authority in the amount of eighty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars for a total project cost of three hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation? Ms. Harris.
So where's this gonna be?
Kirkwood Street.
I don't know where that's at.
I actually don't even know. But it's, um, this vote is just to apply for the grant funding.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I don't know what Kirkwood is.
It's a parking lot.
East Liberty?
Yeah, I think it's on the, my tongue here.
Who's district?
It's not my district.
See, Liberty, if it's any Liberty, it's mine.
Okay.
It's in the neighborhood of East Liberty, it must be mine.
Maybe in a parking lot at sixty-one seventeen. Uh, the electric vehicle charges.
I don't know what it is, I don't know the name of the street. Oh, yeah, okay. I forget where it's at. Yeah, okay.
One five two oh six.
Yeah, that's me. Yeah, that's me. It's my district.
By the Port Authority parking lots?
Huh?
Is it by the Port Authority parking lots, the fleet parking lots, or no?
It looks like it's here.
I don't know.
I did Google Maps, I'm sorry.
Let me see.
That's all right, yeah, so...
That's what I just...
Let me see, let me see. Where's it, where's that, where's, where's that, that short?
By Target?
Oh, yeah, let's, huh?
Will that be public?
I, we apply...
You know what, I didn't ask, so I apologize.
Yeah, I don't know, I think they're applying for the grant. It's in my district, let them apply for the grant, we'll figure it out on the back end.
Yeah.
All right?
Okay, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I know. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Brings us to Innovation, Performance and Assets Management Committee. Ms. Strasburger is the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill twenty-one fifty-six. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works and the Director of Innovation and Performance enter into an amendment agreement with Carthograph Systems, Inc. in order to continue licensing and application software and for the purchase of associated subscription, maintenance, cloud hosting, and professional services.
Need a motion, Ms. Strasburger?
Motion to amend?
Yes, no, need a motion to approve first.
Sorry, you have the amendment.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve now. Ms. Strasburger wants to offer a motion to amend, please make the motion.
Motion to amend.
Need a second? All right, Ms. Strasburger.
Um, there was a, mostly a technical, um, and ease of understanding amendment, um, before you. It's Bill twenty-one fifty-six. It really just outlines the amount year to year that we're gonna be spending and includes those amounts in the, um, one paragraph description of the bill.
All right, thank you very much. There's a motion to amend and a second on the table. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Takes us to the original bill. Any more conversation on the original bill?
I just wanted to thank, um, uh, Budget Director Urbannick for his assistance with this bill.
Any other conversation? No other conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill twenty-one seventy-six. Resolution amending Resolution Number six thirty-nine with the Pittsburgh Community Television, uh, to, which authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Pittsburgh Community Television for public access television services by extending the term of the agreement for one year to September eighteenth, twenty-twenty.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any other, any conversation? No conversation? Ms. Harris.
Yeah, is this for P C T V?
Yes.
Okay, so, um... This is, there's listing of amounts of money. Is that what we're paying, or they're paying us, or... How's that working?
P C T V, uh, right by the West End Bridge there. Yeah.
It wasn't true for you or...
It's yours, it's our names.
Good morning, Heidi. Morning Deputy Director Heidi Norman from I N P.
Hi.
Hello. Um, to answer your question, the, the amount of money is paid to P C T V from, through the franchise agreement. So the city collects money from the franchise agreement, and then we pay a certain amount to P C T V. This legislation is simply to extend our contract with P C T V for a single year while we are undergoing, uh, franchise agreement negotiations.
Okay, was this what it was last year?
I don't have the figures in front of me, but yes, it's probably the same. Yes.
Okay. And I'm sure we have more for our cable guys. And what we're doing here to get rid of these maybe.
The, the current franchise agreement does, uh, give the city money to pay for things like microphones and other things for our cable television station.
Okay, since this is what this is, this year, or following what we did last year, could you let me know the amount of money that would be left for the Cable Bureau?
Uh, so...
For each year? Like what we paid, what we, what we had left to give them?
Right, so the money from the franchise agreement does not pay for the operations of our cable department. It can only pay for equipment of our cable department. And we can, we can get you information about how much was allocated for each year.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, because...
How far back would you like us to go?
Um, if you're looking at these years to be the same as last, then I would like it for, uh, from this year back, the same amount of years. And what, what we gave Cable Bureau, what we gave for equipment? Cause these are really cheesy. I mean, they are, as soon as somebody turns their head, you should see trying to listen to this on television. So, um, yeah, I'd like to see what it is.
So for each of the years of the current franchise agreement?
Yeah. And what, oh, you have it?
You are the best. You, you are the best. She is, she's amazing.
Isn't she?
Yeah. She always comes for proof.
That's the distribution for PCTV and for the Cable Bureau. Would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. I'm Gwen Moore, Acting Assistant Director, um, in IMP. And I've been working with PCTV on the agreement and the extension.
Okay, but what you don't have on here is how much we received each year from Comcast and Verizon.
Let me show you.
Okay.
Sorry. So this is the total that we've gotten from Comcast and Verizon, five million, one hundred seventy thousand dollars.
For which year?
For each year. That's, this is two thousand thirteen. That's the total each year.
Okay, so.
So these are each of the years.
Every year.
This is how much we receive, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. This is what we project for twenty.
Okay, so does this here
Mm-hmm.
equal this same as this?
I'm sorry.
The amount of money for next year.
Pay grants.
Oh, that's, this is a portion of that total.
Right, so what I wanted to see in columns, so I could tell, is, uh, last time, how much?
So we gave a hundred eighty thousand this year, and that's what we're asking for, is to continue the contracts that we can, of these particular items, this a hundred eighty thousand is part of this five point one million.
Okay, what I wanna see in the columns
Okay.
are, this is gonna be exactly the same
Mm-hmm.
backwards. Okay, because we're doing this exact same amount
Mm-hmm.
after, or.
Through twenty twenty.
Now, this is what we've done up to now. That's what we're going to do.
Next year.
Okay, I wanna see what the cable, I don't know that.
So the cable.
That, that would be the PCTV, okay.
So this is what.
Start at the beginning with the, the amounts of money for each year instead of having a whole big chunk like that.
Okay, so in this where it says Cable Bureau?
Right.
PCTV, of that four hundred seven thousand, one hundred eighty thousand is included in that four hundred seven. Of the four hundred one, one eighty thousand is concluded in that. So the total over, this is the total, but the one hundred eighty thousand is included in each of these.
I wanna broke down by year.
This is two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
I wanna see it like this to equal that.
Oh, so you wanna see the total amount?
I wanna see, you know,
Do you want to see?
just like this, and then I wanna see what the Cable Bureau got. And then I wanna see, you know, how much money we had.
Council, Councilwoman, do you want to see this?
Each year.
This, this amount each year, not just this, this contribution, but every other contribution that adds up to each of these? Is that what you're asking for?
Well, for each year, I wanna spread out and I wanna see what they've got.
Here's all the detail, but.
Can you put this together, please?
I can put it together, but we can't put it in the amendment itself. We can put it in a brief for you.
I'm not asking you to put it in a amendment.
We'll put it in a brief for you.
I'll, I'll work with you, with both of you to make sure that that gets done.
Perfect, yep, yep. We have it all, I just don't have it presented the way you would like.
Okay, because I know the Cable Bureau has been cheated for all those years. Matter of fact, uh, the cable companies before, I don't know if you remember, wasn't even coming through council. It was just going up and over
I understand.
to PCTV. So I wanna see the exact numbers
Yes.
which should equal out
Yes.
each year.
Yes. Yes, as a matter of fact, we just went through an audit with the Controller's Office, and all of those things were vetted, so I can also give you the Controller's Office report.
Okay.
It's, it's still in draft form.
You understand.
But I have all of that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll work together to get that.
I can work with you on that.
Thank you so much.
Do you have a timeframe that you wanna get the response?
Uh, yeah, because we're gonna be voting on it.
Okay, so before the end of the week?
Tuesday, before Tuesday.
Before Tuesday.
Fine, that's perfect. I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other conversation?
I'm just gonna abstain till I get that.
Okay.
Any other conversation? If there's no other conversation, I will say something, just inform council that the federal government has changed the laws on franchise agreements, and that it's gonna significantly, starting what, next year? It will significantly change in that we will not receive money anymore from the franchise agreement.
We'll receive money, but they'll deduct what they consider to be the pricing for the free items that we get now.
Right, so there, it's a, it's a different, it's a significantly different funding allocation, not to have.
Can they swap that up?
Wait a minute, just come on. We, they're, they're negotiating now, so it's not, that's, that's.
I know, I'd just like to know what year.
They changed, we don't know yet, but they, the federal, under the wise and insightful leadership of our president, Count, uh, Congress has changed the law to make it, of course, more lucrative for, uh, cable companies by reducing the amounts they have to give to local jurisdictions.
So then the people will pay less on their cable bill?
They will not, of course not. They will not pay less.
No?
No, they will not pay less.
Okay.
We will just get less.
Give me wherever you found that, okay?
It's a federal, I mean, you could talk to.
Yeah. What is the federal agency? I, I forget. The FCC?
The FCC.
Yeah, is the one changing the rules.
Essentially.
And we have to watch out for five G as well.
Yeah, we can, we can give you a, uh, a brief to help you understand, you know, in summary, what the, what the rule change was. It was voted on by the FCC in August, and essentially, in a nutshell, currently, under the current franchise agreement, cable companies are required to provide certain services, such as internet services, to, um, a number of our buildings, uh, city, city-owned buildings, um, for free. In the future, all of those services will have a value placed on them and will be reduced as charges from the overall amount of money that the, that the cable service, cable companies provide to the city.
So right now.
So the amount of money the city will receive from them will go down if that ruling stands.
So, so Comcast is the one that put it in schools and, and into all of our offices and, uh, into the communities. They're the ones that put the lines and added everything in there.
You're talking about existing services?
It will, or would be services that now this state.
So for instance, we have internet service for public access in our senior centers.
Right.
Comcast, at this point, charges nothing for those. That's part of the agreement. But with the FCC ruling, if that's the case, and that becomes an asset to Comcast, and for instance, we may have to pay a thousand dollars, we won't pay, I'm sorry, they may get a credit of a thousand dollars per location that they can subtract from the overall distribution that they would have given us from their subscriber count.
Okay.
But that, it's, it's in discussion now.
Yeah.
So what the, what the councilman is saying, that perhaps next year, if this goes through, we may get less money from the Comcast and Verizon.
So that is why the franchise negotiations are gonna be delicate.
We can vote no, right?
Yeah, that's, it's, it's an FCC ruling.
Yeah, that's a federal ruling. Yeah.
They're gonna charge the residents.
It's not the residents, it's the, the services that we get for, the services that we have in our senior center now are zero to us. There, there's like, um, let's say fifteen of them, however many there are. If those fifteen, if it's determined that they are really a, a chargeable item, then Comcast or Verizon can subtract whatever value they put at them giving us that service from the overall amount of money we get back from them that's deposited into the Verizon Trust Fund and the Comcast Trust Fund. So we just, it would be less money deposited into our trust fund. As far as the residents are concerned, right now, they have sixty-two thousand residents who subscribe to cable. It's up to them to decide if they want to reduce their services or not. We wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Okay.
Thank you very much for calling.
Thank you.
So Gwen, is it fair to say, I mean, this reminds me of like, uh, PWSA with the water. Firefighters, you know, and the zoo, and everybody was getting free water, basically the services. And now what you're saying is, you know, the franchise are gonna charge us for our services that we used to get for free.
If the, if the new FCC ruling becomes effective, yes. But it's still being discussed. It hasn't, it's been approved, but there's still some discussion. We just don't know what the true outcome will be. It's just that we wanted you to, the councilman wanted you to understand that we may be collecting less money next year.
Got it.
And we might be doing what you wanna do, go back to typewriters.
Yeah, that was an agreement between the city and the authority with no one preempting anyone. That was an agreement between the city and the authority.
Mm-hmm.
Without the federal government telling us what we can and cannot do. What is objectionable here, I believe, is that the FCC would tell the municipality what it can and cannot do, and it's a matter of preemption.
You'll be correct, in a sense. Any other conversation? If no other conversation, I just wanted to be everybody, be aware, because I, I was, I didn't know about it. When I found out about it, I'm like, whoa. Let's talk, let's at least, and the bill came up, I thought was just
Thanks, Frau.
good to tell us.
That was great.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harris. All those, all those in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill twenty-one seventy-seven, resolution, amending resolution six sixty-two, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Hootsuite Technology Corporation for HootSuite Enterprise Social Relationship Platform to better manage the city's online constituent service efforts with annual cost of the agreement not to exceed one hundred and four thousand, nine hundred, fifty dollars and forty-five cents.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve with.
Need a second. Any conversation?
I do have, um, just a question about this, because I, I would, I was, this was one of the few kind of bills that in my short tenure here, I've been able to see, um, adopted initially, and then this is the, the, um, extension of the contract. So I wanted to make sure that, um, we're very happy with HootSuite and, and the services that they're providing, and it's actually, um, resulting in, you know, uh, the bettering of our, um, uh, the, the betterment of our, um, ability to engage with social media and run campaigns and everything that it's intended to do, right?
Uh, so, we are actually no longer using HootSuite. We found that it was not, um, effective in terms of what we wanted to be able to accomplish. Okay. What this legislation is doing is, uh, last year, there was legislation to, uh, begin using this software. However, uh, there was not a contract in place at the time. Uh, the, the company allowed us to begin using the software. Uh, we stopped using the software as of March first of this year. Um, and they want to invoice us for the services that they provided for those nine or ten months. So we have, we have the contract in place, um, and ready to go, but we found that the legislation was to make a payment in twenty eighteen. So this is basically taking the money from twenty eighteen and moving it to twenty nineteen so that we can actually pay for the services that we used.
Okay.
Any other conversation?
So there was no contract?
There was no initial contract when we began using the services.
I'm gonna vote no today.
Ms. Harris?
Did this come through council?
Yes, it did, last summer, in twenty eighteen.
That you were going to use the HootSuite?
Yes, and we did, we did use HootSuite, um, but the services began and we started using it. And when we decided that it was no longer, it wasn't really what we wanted to be doing, that was when they wanted payment, and that's when we discovered that we didn't actually have a vehicle to pay them. So that's what we are doing now.
Okay, so we stopped them in March.
Correct.
Okay, so we owe them for three months.
We owe them from, I believe it's June of twenty eighteen, until March first of twenty nineteen.
Do we know how, there was no contract in place? That's what I'm concerned about.
Um, I'm afraid that I wasn't involved with that, uh, so I don't know why there wasn't a contract. And I don't know, and I don't know why the software company allowed us to begin using their software without a contract in place.
So anybody can just bill us, we can do something, then think it's free, and then they, that's like getting a free.
Well, if there was no contract, why do we have to pay them?
We could.
And let me ask, who started, who did this without a contract? Because everything that comes to us is supposed to be a contract.
I'm gonna motion to hold one week, and we can dig into this a little bit more.
So before you make the motion.
I think we'd like to have the public conversation, because this is pretty important.
So there are two issues, if you don't, if, if you don't mind. There are two different issues that I think we need to sort of talk about them. One is, one is, the one issue is the, is the, the validity of this action, that we are paying for something that we did not contract for. I think that's one thing, and I think that's part of this conversation. But I think there's a second part of conversation that we need to have before we pass this, that this, this could be viewed as a, as the attempt to circumvent pa, uh, council authority. The one thing council does have authority is over the budget. And so if a department decides that it's going to then make expenditures without council approval and then ask for and, and then ask for an opportunity to pay on the back end, I'm not saying that you did, but I'm saying it could be viewed as, as, uh, because in my mind, you should not be able to pay it or use it prior to us approving it. And if you used it prior to us approving it,
Free.
then someone, someone's responsible, and I'd like to know their thinking. No, I may be wrong, but am I saying this right?
No, I think you, I think you have a valid point. So my understanding is that legislation was passed last summer by council to approve those.
Approve exactly what?
Approve the expenditure for HootSuite.
Before you used it.
And they didn't tell us there wasn't a contract.
With an agreement.
It's the same.
Can I still have the floor?
So let me go, let me get back to you. Let me, let me, I'm sorry, let me go back to you. Let me, let me figure out, let me, let me hear, let me hear the argument. So we approved the contract to pay HootSuite, is that what you're saying? We, we approved money for the contract with HootSuite?
Yes, that's, that's my understanding.
In two thousand eighteen.
Correct.
You then used it, but you never had a contract with them, even though we approved the money for you to go into contract with them?
That's correct. My understanding is that, that we were trying to go through the contract process, um, but that it was never completed. By the time we stopped using the software, the contract still had not been completed, and we were in a position where they were asking for payment, and we had no vehicle to, to do so.
Then that takes the council problem off the table, but doesn't bring, it doesn't take the original problem off the table, which is, is the validity
He's taking my turn.
of paying money to a contract that was never executed.
I'm not going.
May I?
Okay, yeah, Ms. Harris?
So, as the Reverend said, basically, what I was trying to say is if some company comes up and they wanna give free services until they have a contract, they can do that. If it's okay with you, until it, it, there is a contract in place. So why would we think that we owe them any money? And who was dealing with them?
Uh, council's office, the law office, has been working with them.
So the law office brought HootSuite Enterprises to the city of Pittsburgh?
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood the question. I thought you meant recently, who has been working with them and negotiating with them.
Yeah, who started?
That's been the law office.
Who started?
Our law, city law.
Our law office, yes, correct.
Who started with Hootsville?
Who started using the software?
Who brought it here?
Oh, the, the, um, IMP did.
IMP, who?
Uh, Laura Miksel.
Laura Miksel?
Yes, she was Assistant Director. She's no longer with the city.
Imagine that. Okay, so if she knew we didn't have a contract, and the company knew we didn't have a contract, then why would council even have to think about paying it?
Mm-hmm. So in the aftermath of this, when they, uh, started asking for payment, after we stopped using the software, we were advised by our law office that we should pay them, um, for the period of time that we used the software. And the way to do that would be to complete the contract and to have this legislation in order to be able to pay the money.
But if we don't pass this legislation, then, because I have never seen anyone, unless it's somebody that's just trying to get us to take their services, and they wanna get going without a contract, I consider that, without a contract, free.
Councilwoman, if I may, as, as Chair of this committee, um, I, I, there are a lot of good questions that you're bringing up, that Reverend Burgess is bringing up today. I would like to, uh, make a motion to hold this one week, dig into the legislation from last year, find out exactly what happened, get some more questions answered for all of you, and bring it back and discuss next.
And, and this don't have to do with either one of you. It's somebody else.
So there's a motion to hold. Is there a second motion to hold?
Well, I think we should finish conversation. That's what we usually do.
All right, is there more conversation on this?
And I do, I have some questions.
If you would, if you, hold. All right, I didn't, I didn't know that until you made it, she says. If you would, if you, if you would simply hold, we'll come back to the motion. We'll go back to the motion.
I'm happy to hold the motion.
Thank you very much. Ms.
Okay.
Harris, are you finished?
Yeah.
Of course not.
Who was Lauren's superior?
Uh, well, actually, it changed over the period of time that she was here. Originally, it was Lee Haller. He was the Director of IMP, um, until August of twenty eighteen, and then Acting Director Sylvia Harris until January of this year, and now Santiago Garcas is the Director.
So what we're doing was four different, or three different people. Okay, and, yeah, when did he come? When did we put him in place?
Director Garcas. He came in January of twenty nineteen.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Uh, he arrived in January of twenty nineteen.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I, I do wanna talk about this more off record, maybe with the legal department, if you don't mind.
Of course not. I'm sure the solicitor will be happy to answer your questions.
Weren't part of it, but.
We're trying to fix it and wrap it up.
Well, I don't think it's how it gets fixed, but, but. After you, uh, we'll hold.
Yeah, I just wanna give Grant a chance to come to the table.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I, Grant, you wanna come to the table? Is there anything you wanna add to this? Thank you. I, Grant, you wanna come to the tables or anything you wanna add to this? I noticed you came in. Right, so council did authorize, okay.
For an agreement, but there was no agreement.
But I think this, this, I think, well, wait, I, I have the floor, I'm just gonna say, I think this just lends the concerns to the council. And Gross and I have been saying is that we need to have more oversight from council. And I know that council members don't like the conversations, some of us wanna get out of here quickly, but this is our job. And so it's to oversee the public dollars, and, and so it's, it's disheartening to me to see people feeling so, um, so eager to get out of here and, and this conversation, when to me, this is something really important to talk about. This is, the public has a right to know what happened here. So I, I just wanna see if you have something that you wanna add to that.
No, I think the deputy director, uh, added everything that, you know, we can add. I think when, like with many pieces of technology, we're trying to keep the city up to speed, and we, you know, my understanding, when the agreement was entered into, is that we thought that HootSuite would do a good job in helping us, uh, address constituent concerns. You know, we have, you know, different departments that are interacting online in order to address constituent concerns, and this technology is supposed to aggregate that, or at least help, was supposed to help with that. And I think it didn't turn out to be as effective as that as we thought it would. And the, yeah, and the contracting-
There's no signed agreement, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, it, um, but yeah, and, and the agreement process should have been done. I think we all recognize that part of it, and in the future will happen. And most of our agreements that council authorizes us to do, do get, do get entered into, so.
So I'm just gonna say with that, I'm going to respect the chair and that she wants to hold this, but I do have a lot more, a lot of questions. And I'm going to vote no today if we take a vote, but, um, that's it for me. But I see Councilwoman Gross also has questions.
I'd like to see the attorney.
Just briefly, I'm gonna suggest that part of the problem, possibly, that we, you could come back to us with, is that this was a technology, um, online purchase. Um, and so, for example, if you were negotiating with a vendor of some other kind in a kind of old industry way, a law firm or something, they would not be providing the service without a signed contract. But these technologies, you can just click and buy, right? It's the same problem you have monitoring your children at home, that they don't run up your tab on your Amazon or your iTunes or something. You can't give them passwords to actually be able to... And I think the technology companies as well are checking to see whether or not it's a municipal or municipality making the purchase or an individual making the purchase. So I don't know if that's part of what this equation is, but I suspect someone just like clicked and bought and didn't do it in the old fashioned way.
Thank you very much, Ms. Strausberger.
Um, so I would like to motion to, move to, motion, make a motion to hold one week.
Second.
And this is, to be clear, not because I wanna get out of here, I wanna have this discussion. I felt as if we didn't have all the answers in front of us today, and that we have a lot more questions, um, that need to get properly answered in the, in the next week prior to taking up this discussion once again.
Motion to hold for a week, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Nay, next bill, please.
Bill twenty-one seventeen, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into a master lease agreement with Dell Financial Services for leasing services to lease electronic devices with installation and support services for a period of seven years. The total amount of funds for this equipment and services will be appropriated and approved under separate subsequent requests and will not exceed three million, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars and twenty-three cents.
All right, um, I need a motion, Ms. Strausberger.
Motion to approve.
I need a second, Ms. Strausberger. Conversation?
I have no questions.
No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's nay. Okay, that takes us to intergovernment, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Places the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Mr. Connor is the chair, we have a supplemental paper.
Bill twenty-two oh five, Resolution providing for an agreement between the city and McCaffrey Interests, Inc. in or the URA in connection with improvements to the cartway generally at the strip district terminal at sixteen hundred Smallman Street, and for access to make these, those improvements to the cartway, and for temporary operation and maintenance in anticipation of a future public right-of-way, public park, and public operation and maintenance of the cartway, and potential public dedication of the cartway at the site.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve, discussion?
Need a second?
Second.
Second, Mr.?
I'll yield to-
Ms. Gross?
Thank you. I just wanna say a few things since we've had so much discussion. I just wanna remind council that this is the same project that includes both the produce terminal, Smallman Street from sixteenth to twenty-first, and as well McCaffrey Interests has bought the big warehouses, bought half the block of the big warehouses across the street. Um, we've seen TIFs, we've seen R caps. Um, when I just searched our own public record, I didn't even realize, um, or had forgotten, and, and so you and the public may as well, that there was even a fifteen million dollar R cap for this general project in twenty-eleven. Now, you can slice and dice and say, well, this is not actually for the building, it's for the street in front of the building, between the two buildings that the same person owns. A four million dollar R cap in twenty sixteen, a two million dollar R cap in twenty eighteen, another multimodal grant in twenty eighteen for a million dollars. Uh, and then again, the TIF that council approved, um, in terms of rebuilding this project, in the highest value property in western Pennsylvania, probably, surrounded by developments that are not using public funds. Um, so I just wanted to say that now, having, having said all that, this R cap is not a city requested R cap, I'm told by our, um, councilman Lavelle, who's at the URA, and from what I've inquired, this is one where, and this is legal, right? An individual property owner can request this money from the state. And, but, and yet here, it's being used in what is our public space. So, the cartway being, you know, the street section that's in between his two buildings. Uh, we had extensive, extensive public meetings for years around what that design would be, so I'm not going to object to this today. I just really wanna have it on the record that I think there's a legitimate, um, public interest in there being so many public dollars into a project. Um, and a, a valid question about, you know, what we're spending public dollars on. But again, to reiterate, the individual property owner requested this, it was granted by the state. These are not city funds. We are just here voting to receive these funds. And we hope that in this stretch between sixteenth and twenty-first, what results with the very close attention of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the City Planning Department with the property owners is, and the URA, is a people-centered space, um, that is safe, pedestrian safe, bicycling safe, and that really activates and enhances the heart of the strip district and supports the surrounding businesses as well that we all know and love and have been there for a hundred years. So I'm gonna, I'll vote yes here today, but I just wanted to remind us to keep an eye on these projects that are so big, and there are so many wheels in motion that are beyond our scope sometimes even. So I just wanted to have that public discussion. Thank you, Councilwoman Furlong.
Motion to approve on the table, all of them favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's nay. Next bill, please.
Bill twenty-two oh nine, Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan land for the two oh one arsenal phase two residential land development project located at one thirty-five thirty-ninth street.
Need a motion, Mr. Connor?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation, all those in-
Actually, this is a very big site in my district, if you would mind, Mr. Chair. So, it did go to planning yesterday, um, and so I would have been holding this because I'm concerned about the sequence of things. Um, we normally, we're seeing sewer, sewer modules as our last vote. Maybe we shouldn't, maybe we should actually be seeing them as our first vote. Why would you get all the approvals and take a whole year if you don't have approval from city council to build your sewers? So there's, there's a question on the table, but since it was our regular operating procedure to see them last, um, I, I just wanna say thank you for holding this. And, and again, a reminder, this is phase two of the thirteen acre site, twelve point seven five acre site that is at Fortieth and Butler Street, where the first phase of two hundred and fifty luxury apartments happened before the inclusionary zoning legislation. And this is the second phase of over three hundred apartments, which will include the thirty-five some apartments at a more deeply affordable rent. Um, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Any other conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's nay. Takes us to the last bill of this session.
Bill twenty-one seventy-three, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an interlocal, intergovernmental agreement with Allegheny County with respect to the winter seasons of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-one to twenty two, twenty twenty-two, under which the city will store, handle, and load salt for the county. And the county will store, uh, for the city. The city will perform snow and ice clearance together with the application of anti-skid and or de-icing materials for certain county roads, including bridges with their approaches. And the county will perform snow and ice clearance together with the application of anti-skid and or de-icing materials for certain city roads, including bridges with their approaches.
Need a motion, Mr. Connor?
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Conversation, Ms. Harris?
Somebody second it, second.
Yeah, second.
Second. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I would just say, um, it seems pretty simple that we're gonna be working with the county on certain roads. They're gonna help us with a couple, probably make the system more efficient in, uh, the wintertime.
Thank you, Ms., Mr. Connor, now Ms. Harris.
We've been working with the county. We've been working with the state too. So my questions are, um, where is the salt gonna be stored? Is this county salt, city salt, or are you talking about all salt?
Um, what we're talking about here is a reserve salt. Sorry, my name is Marcel Newman, Assistant Director of Public Works. Um, so this bill is just to give us an authorization to enter into an agreement with the county, um, for a salt reserve. So we're all using our own reserves, our own salts. But for, uh, you know, in case we get snowmaged in tomorrow, we just wanna make sure we have enough salt reserve-
But what it's-
At the county and at the city.
What it's saying is the city will store, handle, load salt for the county.
We do have a location at the heavy equipment in, on twenty eighth street in the strip district. And the county has location in, uh, Blonox Dome. Uh, so we will exchange, you know, as needed, wherever our crews are, they're able to access those locations, and they, the same. And at the end of the, the year, we figure out who's used the salt, and then we compensate each other. It's a very simple sharing agreement.
Yeah, but the city always gets the end of the... We end up doing more-
Paying for everything.
And paying for basically everything. And my concern is, um, what this year is the city supposed to be doing? And I'd like to see it citywide. And what is the county supposed to do for the city, and what's the city doing for the county?
So there's two separate agreements. One is for salt sharing, just a couple of locations. And another agreement is for servicing certain roads, uh, some small roads out that, um,
And some are big roads.
Across boundaries between the city and the county.
So what I-
So we maintain some of their roads, and they'll maintain some of our roads, the equal amount of roads.
And I would like to see that, and I would like to see what the city is handling, and what's the county handling for the city?
We can get you-
And what streets are being sold by the city for the county? And what streets are the county doing for the city?
That, that information is readily available, I can get it to you.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
And do you have, you know, like, the whole thing, um...
I'll have maps as well.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Any other conversation? See, no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's nay. That concludes the agenda for the meeting. I have a few announcements this afternoon.
Thank you.
At one thirty, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill nineteen fifty-one and nineteen fifty-three as they relate to the Carnegie Mellon University Institutional Master Plan. Also this evening at six thirty, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on the proposed Pittsburgh Parks Conservati, Conservati, Conservancy tax referendum on the two thousand nineteen general election ballot. Tomorrow at one thirty PM, council members will meet for an executive session on litigation issues. And on Monday, October twenty-eighth at one thirty, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bills twelve, twenty-one eighty, and twenty-one eighty-one as they relate to Enright Parklet. I need a motion, we were all here today, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's nay. We are adjourned.